I'm the Vice President of the Commission for Women of Boulder City. And we wanted to introduce you today, we have students that are mentees from the local high schools, Airline High School.
Rebecca.
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 Come up to the front, please.
Please.
And then state your name and.
Thought I had a big mouth.
Yeah.
We weren't gonna say that, though.
Pardon?
So we weren't gonna say that.
Hello, good afternoon, and I'm Rebecca Bonavir, and I'm here on behalf, I'm the Women's Commission, I'm the Vice President. And we have several students that are here with us today. We do a mentor-mentee program, and our mentees are from the high schools for Airline, Benton High, Bojor High School, Houghton High School, Parkway High School, and Plain Dealing High School. And they go through a number of events that we go with them every year, and today we wanted them to learn about our city government, so they're here today. So would you all stand so that you can be recognized?
And tell us who you are and what high school you attend.
I'm Hallie Cuthbert from Parkway High School.
I'm Desiree Mill from Parkway High School.
We have DeSantis from Bojor High School.
Okay, Laura from.
What was your high school?
Jakarta Williams Allen High School.
I'm Lisa Reynolds from Allen High School.
Paula Parrish from Plain Dealing High School.
Kayla Donner from Benton High School.
Lori and I from Walton High School.
Vera Stanfield from Walton High School.
I'll stand.
I had one to sneak in.
Oh, and we have another student that just came as well.
Yeah.
Will you say your name and where you're from?
Me, too, but it's from Plain Dealing.
Outstanding, we appreciate you ladies being here with us today.
All right, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, next will be Robin Jones with our Bojor Arts Council with an East Bank District update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and I just wanted to think.
Start with your name and your.
Oh, sorry, Robin Jones, Six Thirty Barksdale Boulevard.
Thank you.
Michael Burns.
Michael Burns, Community Development Coordinator of Bojor Arts Council.
Okay, we wanted to thank you again for entrusting us with the East Bank District. I emailed you before the quicker report for the month, and I wanted to just kind of quickly go through that again. And if there's any feedback and anything that you would like us to change or add to the reports, we'll be glad to do that for the next month. We've been handling the bookings for just about two and a half months now, and we've booked seventeen events in September, October, and then, of course, you can see all of the upcoming events all the way through 2019. We have a handful of events that we're still working on finalizing, but as you can see, we've done a couple of lunches in the plaza already, that's had a pretty good turnout. We've done our Digifest EDM concert with laser lights that you could see from Airline Drive, which was pretty cool, that had about a hundred and fifty in attendance. We've done Mike McSwain, we did a field trip with the BYL students. We've also, Camp Gladiator's been in the plaza a couple of times. Upcoming, we have the trunk-or-treat with the Louisiana Classics Car Club. Each of the classic cars will pop their trunk, and the kids will get to go trick-or-treating from car to car. And then we have live music coming up in November. And, yeah, so just, that's where we are, we're booking. Do you have any questions for us about this process, or?
Can we go to your website to find these events that's upcoming?
We're working on a link to our website, it's not ready yet, but it will be. There are Facebook events, and there's, we have something called What's Happening in the East Bank District, there's a Facebook for that, and there's also a Facebook specifically for the district and plaza, and all of the events are listed there. As soon as we get the marketing materials from the person that's putting on the event, we put it right on the page.
Okay.
And there is a master calendar, and I've shared that, of course, with Pam and with the mayor's office, so there's a master calendar that you can see for the next year what's going on.
But the main one, for everybody seeing the city, is through the Facebook?
Right now, it's through the Facebook, yeah, and as soon as our website gets updated with this tab, then we'll share that with you as well.
Thank you.
This is one of those events, we talked about the city developing an app that you could put on a phone, and this would be a perfect use for that app to promote the East Bank, and not to have, you know, twelve different sites that people have to go to to find what's going on, they could just go to one and see what's happening, so.
Sign up for notification on their phone, where if an event that comes up this weekend, notify them on Friday, and remind them that, hey, we got this going on Saturday, maybe want to come out, yeah, that's a great idea.
And we just added, it's still in the development process, but we just added, it's called a Google Beacon, and it goes in the front of the Arts Council, and what it does is it tracks people's phones as they've come through the district, and then we're able to send them a text message that says, we noticed that you were in the district on Thursdays, you know, thank you for stopping by. And so I'm really excited to sort of delve into that a little bit more and see how we can help promote more in the plaza using that beacon.
That's pretty cool. Thank you. Any other questions? Appreciate you coming today, you're doing a great job. All right, next, Jeff Moulton, Executive Director, Cyber Research Center in Baton Rouge, LSU Baton Rouge, Cyber Security Update.
Very good, well, thank you for having me, I don't know if this is an update or just a scary briefing, I wanted to give you an idea of some of the threats that we're facing today, and I have a really bad case of bronchitis, so hopefully you can hear me, guys, good? People in the back, good? All right, all ready? Right out of the gate, I am not responsible for what I'm about to say. The three people that I service, DIA, CIA, NSA, do not sanction my briefings, although they do have to approve them, this is not anything that is sanctioned or approved by them, other than the fact that my opinion about where we are in cybersecurity today, so don't blame the government, blame me. And we have a stalled-out hack already on my system.
We've been hacked.
Help me out.
It's now clear, this cyber threat is one of the most serious economic and national security challenges we face as a nation.
Four months after taking office, President Obama made those concerns part of our national defense policy, declaring the country's digital infrastructure a strategic asset, and confirming that cyber warfare had moved beyond theory.
Twenty fourteen saw, for the first time, destructive cyber attacks carried out on U.S. soil by nation-state. Attacks against us are increasing in frequency, scale, sophistication, and severity of impact.
It's a cyber war on a global scale. Key systems of hundreds of U.S. and European energy companies have been infected by a sophisticated cyber weapon. This is according to a report by leading online security company, Symantec. The company says a state-backed group with apparent ties to Russia is behind the breach.
David, some of the computer systems serving the country's most important utilities have been penetrated by hackers using a malicious software called Black Energy. It was planted years ago, but has not been activated, and only recently discovered. What's at risk? Power plants, the electric grid, water treatment facilities, natural gas pipelines. In theory, this software could allow a hacker to use the internet to shut down a generator, flood a water treatment plant, or turn off a pipeline.
Iran hacks into the control system of an American dam just twenty miles north of New York City. Now, the breach represents a nightmare scenario for U.S. officials, and exposes a significant gap in the security of our nation's critical infrastructure.
One top U.S. intelligence official is on record saying that the Chinese have already aggressively infiltrated the computer networks of some U.S. banks, and are operating inside U.S. electrical grids, mapping out our networks, and presumably leaving behind malicious software that could be used to sabotage the system.
I don't think there should be any doubt in anybody's mind that the cyber challenges we're talking about are not theoretical.
They're not theoretical, they're real, they're happening every single day, right here in Louisiana, next slide, for whatever reason, this is not working. I was at the House, at the Senate Armed Services Committee, talking about this two years ago, when General Hector Clapper brought out this briefing, gave it to the Congress, and said one striking thing, this cyber threat that we face today can never be eliminated. And I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-nine, and I concur with that wholeheartedly. Robert Moore, depending on the level of politics, had many, many quotes, I'll quote one here on board, there are only two types of companies out there, those that have been hacked, and those that will be, that is a fact. We are now living in a day where every one of our businesses are under digital siege, you've experienced it right here in Bojor recently, we've experienced it in Baton Rouge three times already this week, last week, excuse me, literally in Texas, on my drive up here in the port of San Diego, it's happening every single day, day after day, article after article, newsreel after newsreel, if you're not looking at this, you're not paying attention. It is real, it's imperative that we understand it, and we prevent it as much as we can. I have a law, you will always have the least control and the most at stake, so it's imperative on each of you to protect not only yourself, but your families and your businesses. It is always worse than they claim, and I'll give you some examples of that in a few minutes, there's always, you'll always be the last to know, you'll always be the one to suffer, and you will always be the one that has to clean it up, Moulton's Law. Yahoo, free billion accounts compromised. Melissa Mayer, what happened to her, she's the president's CEO, she doesn't even know how to happen, she got fired and got twenty-three million dollar severance, that's a beautiful way to be fired, I want to get fired that way. Equifax, if you don't know this, Equifax, again, first time out the door, they said a hundred and forty-three million, next week was a hundred and forty-five million, what does that mean? That's such a staggering number, we don't even know what that means. That means in every household in America, a household of four, on average, one person was affected. I would argue, raise your hand, do you know if you were affected? Most people don't, and you won't until you get compromised and hacked, and I'll tell you, that's not a pleasant experience. Richard Smith, I call him Dick, ninety million dollar severance. That's accountability, but we live in this day and age. Just this week, last week, Facebook, another fifty million people, how many use Facebook? Come on, kids, I just heard you guys are gonna put your apps on Facebook. I'm saying not to you, but I'm just saying, be careful what you do. Hygienic measures are coming in play, I've actually brought a document here that I'll add up to you afterwards, that'll tell you how to configure your Facebook and your social media accounts, your phone, as well as you can, in accordance with the government standards. So for government employees or government contractors, they have a how-to guide on how to configure your Facebook account, and whatever other social media that you use in the most secure manner possible. I'll leave that with you here, if you don't, I only have enough copies for probably half a dozen of you, I have my business card here, you can send, I'll send you an electronic version of it. The SEC that's supposed to keep all this from happening was hacked. And Deloitte, the people that actually are hired to actually institute their networks for the SEC, who check the checkers, was hacked too. You can't run. If you follow any kind of geek speak like I do for a living, Wired Magazine, this is the cover of Wired Magazine, that's a Geek magazine, right? How to Switch a Country Off. Our adversaries are targeting our infrastructure so that we don't need kinetic weapons, they don't need bombs and bullets anymore, they need an enter switch, a return button, a click. Our weapons are now digital, and they're being deployed. NSA, my former employer, one of my contracts now, leaked through Lot Seven and the CIA all of our offensive and our defensive secrets on the cyber realm. So now we know that our enemies know what we know, as recent as just last year. Every company out there has got something at stake, this thing is really latent, I've got denial service.
Get a little bit closer this way, because the system is over here.
Need a bigger battery. They're attacking our power grids, they're attacking our transportation systems, last month in the city of Denver, they took down the entire Department of Transportation and held it for ransom. Power plants, water plants, that bottom right-hand picture is a nuclear power plant in Kentucky that was hacked literally two months ago, can you imagine what could happen? I call this my wall of shame, recognize any of those companies on there? Two thousand fourteen, those were the big ones, that isn't an exhaustive list, that's just a representative sample. My point with these slides is to show you what happens to them, it sure as the world can happen to you. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, just last month, recognize any of those companies? The city of Atlanta, Sears, good thing they're going out of business, it wasn't because of this hack, by the way. The healthcare sector is getting lapped at the time, why? Why did Jesse James rob banks? That's where the money is. Anthem, one of the largest health insurers in the United States, eighty million customers, yours truly included, it was just settled the fine that Anthem paid, literally yesterday, to Health and Human Services, just a fine to HHS, not what they paid the class act lawsuit people, just HHS, fourteen million dollars just for the fine. Why are they targeting the medical sector? Because why did Jesse James rob banks? That's where the money is. On average, a medical identity is about twenty times more lucrative than your personal identity, that's why they're targeting them, about two thousand dollars on the dark web per record, and it's happening here in Louisiana every single day. My number-one clients inside the state of Louisiana are medical corporations. So, just like everything else, what do we do? Let's get the government involved, they'll fix it, I don't really want their help. As Ronald Reagan quoted, the most terrifying words in the English language, or, I'm from the government and I'm here to help you. There's the top hacks in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, there's two thousand seventeen, government agencies, government agencies that were hacked. Now, you slathered all the shame with the corporations, now you see the government, nobody is exempt. I'll get to what you do about it in a minute. IRS, I just met a taxman here a few minutes ago, three hundred thousand, well, that actually turned out to be about seven hundred and fifty thousand. OPM, the Office of Personnel Management, worst hack in the history of the United States government, a hundred million people, including yours truly. That's my letter from OPM, made me feel real special, and I looked at the back of it, and they said, oh, by the way, we screwed up your records, put it here, five. Don't blame us, don't sue us, we'll give you some insurance to make you feel better or what. This has ruined my life, my fingerprints, my weapon scans, all my personal information will not secure property. Fortunately, OPM has been getting more and more, and even the first of them are getting more and more. I am a cyber professional, I'm doing this every day, but if it can happen to me, it can happen to you. There are some things like this that were not in my control, you need to understand and appreciate that, and do as much as you can upfront to control what you can, but there are some things that are out of your control, and you need to take as much of that with a grain of salt as you can, but ask questions. When you go to the doctor and they ask you for your social security number, you say, why don't my last four count? And oh, by the way, where's your privacy statements at? And how do you secure my records? And you're gonna get this confused puppy look, and they'll go, oh, it's okay, you can just fill in another number. Use your last four, last four of your social security number, you'd have to put the whole thing in there, there's small things, I'll get to those in a minute. The FTC settled, and it actually charged two corporations just this past year for data breaches. I doubt very seriously the FTC takes on Equifax, but we'll see. What is the future? The future is here, these young kids in the room here from the high schools, I'm very glad that you're here, and I appreciate you guys listening to me, you guys value convenience over privacy, you guys want to have that app and that constant connectivity, and that's okay. That's it. I'm starting to break out here. How's that, any better?
That's better.
All right, man, that thing was weird, my magnetic personality. But we convenient, we put convenience over privacy and security, we just are willing to go ahead and accept the loss of security and the loss of privacy. We have driverless cars running around San Francisco right now, we have a navy that's being built that's gonna ship our goods around the world without a command pilot, that scares the heck out of me, I can hack the heck out of these things, now this won't work. I predict, before I retire, you're gonna start to see people being held liable for their Internet of Things devices that are not properly secured. How many of you have printers at your home? How many of you have separate passwords at your house? Is that my pacemaker? I don't even have one. When you have a gun at your house, and someone breaks into your house, and they perpetrate a crime with that weapon, guess who gets in trouble? You're held liable, why? Because you did not secure that weapon. The same thing is going to, is going through, it's happening right now, there's case law right now that exists, that if your Internet of Things devices in your possession or within your control are not secured, you will be held liable as an accomplice with that event. That is coming, that's why the digital insurance is such a big thing right now, not only with the corporations, but also with individuals, too. How many have identity theft insurance? How many have company insurance with a cyber caveat or a cyber policy? City does?
I don't know.
Very interesting case, I just came back from Atlanta, working with the FBI in the city of Atlanta, everybody know the city of Atlanta got hacked, held ransomware, it was ugly on ugly. If you get a parking ticket or a traffic violation in Atlanta, don't pay it, they can't collect, our system's still down, it's been down for three months. It is scary what's going on in Atlanta. That said, they had insurance, they weren't allowed to recover the network until the insurance people came in, my fault that time, the insurance people came in and did their due diligence on the network intrusion itself, so they kept the response forces based on the insurance policy terms and conditions from responding to the incident until the insurance company cleared, including law enforcement, which I found fascinating. We actually had the FBI coming down, I sit on the Governor's Council for Cybersecurity, they're coming down on December sixth to brief it. Fascinating case study, because of the insurance policy, and the authority did not understand the terms and conditions as much as they should have, very interesting case law. We go again. Forbes, or Lloyds of London are saying, and they're quoting, their insurance policies will be as costly as a Cat Five hurricane, fifty-three to two hundred, or a hundred and twenty billion dollars, a significant digital event. Not a whole lot of difference between a natural disaster and a digital disaster, by the way, my family's in Panama City right now, and it's a lot worse than what you see on TV. Banks forgot this, they got it figured out, they're already planning for it, insurance companies are planning for it, the healthcare's gonna continue to get pounded, if you didn't track what was going on in California, you should be, this hospital was the very first one to experience ransomware, they asked seventeen thousand Bitcoin, which right now is about two million dollars, they actually paid it, fortunately, the ransomware people actually turned it back over to them, that normally does not happen, this case it did. Just to give you an idea how complex some of these attacks are, anybody hear this casino attack? This is a major casino in Las Vegas, I won't disclose which one, they had an aquarium in the lobby. They hacked, and I didn't even know they'd made these, a smart thermostat that controlled the temperature of the water in the aquarium, that's what they hacked, they were able to get into the casino network and steal the files on all their heavy, what they call whales, the big spenders in the casinos, and all their personal information, including their bank account numbers as well, and they did it through the thermostat in the lobby aquarium. You got to understand what you're doing when you start buying these smart devices, they aren't so smart. We are not living in an age of the Internet of Things, it's not about things anymore, it's the Internet of you. Each of you individuals are on social media, using social media, sharing information that you used to never share, just think about it for a second, how many people on Facebook? I'll put this way, I don't want to embarrass you, how many people not on Facebook other than myself? Not many. All your information's out there, all your pictures on Snapchat, all your friends on LinkedIn and other different networking social medias, where you've been with your Google Maps, even if you didn't use the map function on your phone, that phone's still tracking your every being. Right now, if I asked to see every one of your phones in here, I'd look at it, and I'd say, the very first thing I'd do is look to see if your Bluetooth is turned on, or your Wi-Fi is turned on, because either one of those, you're being tracked. I can track you right now, if I know your phone number, no matter where you go in this country, through those two functions. Your spending habits, if you're on Amazon, all your data that's backed up in your web client, so whether it's either Microsoft, it's your, or Amazon Web Player, it doesn't matter, any cloud provider, if you use any kind of online purchasing power like PayPal, Apple Pay, all that data is being used to capture information on you, your family, your whereabouts, and what you're doing, and heaven forbid, do not fall prey to face recognition and thumbprints on your phone. I bet you, I won't make you raise your hand, but I bet you there's people in here doing it. We're doing this every day, and we don't even think twice about it. If you have one of these, please don't raise your hand, I like you already, I don't want to dislike you, these devices are evil. Absolutely evil, if you get one for Christmas, send it back, better yet, take it back, get the money back, buy something else. They're evil, they're surveillance devices, God forbid, do not buy, Amazon hates me, by the way, this alarm clock, it's a camera and a microphone, if you're okay with having a camera and a microphone beside your bed, press on, I'll see you on Pornhub. Don't do it, heaven forbid, don't put these in your office, and more and more, these things are creeping their way into the workplace. This is a surveillance device, full stop, no exception. I can hack this device without you even knowing about it, and I can hack it without even doing an exploit, I can, for three dollars, I can give this commands, it's called a dolphin attack, to any one of these, Cortana, Alexa, Home, the dot, I don't care, it's at a frequency that I tell it what to do, that is inaudible in human ears, that's why they call it a dolphin attack, when dolphins talk to each other, they go, hee-hee-hee, that's what you hear, they actually, actually communicate about fifty kilohertz, that's the way we actually give commands to these things, and I can do this from a mile away, I can turn your house on, I can turn your Alexa on, I can turn your vacuum on, through your PA, through your personal assistants, from a mile away, with an audible command that you cannot hear, and that's not even hacking it, that's just telling it what to do. They're dangerous. Again, do you need it? Maybe, maybe not, if you don't, I say leave it alone. The future of hacking, the future of murder, again, Wired Magazine, is digital, think about it, if I was gonna run you through a CAT scan, and I wanted to take you out, I could hack into that CAG stan machine and cook you like bacon. Non-attribution, no DNA, no evidence, nothing, and turn you off. The Russians are selling this, I love the Russians, men are entrepreneurial, a hit squad, they're selling exploits on how to do. A hit squad. They're selling exploits on how to do just that. You girls have any boyfriends you don't like? Call me later. The latest pacemaker, I'm sorry, this was a insulin pump by Medtronic. This is a brand new device just on the market this past month. Two months ago, I guess it was, back in May. Eighty-six hundred vulnerabilities in one device. It's the Internet of you folks. I don't know if you watched what happened with Fitbit. How many people have Fitbits on right now? In the US government, you cannot wear a Fitbit in a facility that it has any kind of classification, period, full stop, no exception. We were tracking our troops over in Afghanistan through their Fitbit. Classified deployed locations were revealed because people wearing Fitbits. Children are thirty-five times more likely to be hacked than adults. Thirty-five times. Why? Anybody? They're easy prey. Every child that's born has to get a social security number. If that social security number's out there, the bad guys know it and they know they're going to get a fifteen to seventeen year head start before you ever catch on. Most people don't catch on until they send their kids off to college and they actually get a credit card or try to get a car in their kid's name and then they realize they had identity theft and then they got a problem. Eighteen year head start. On average, thirty-five times more likely. Toys are spying on children just like Alexa and Cortana are spying on your homes. FBI has gotten so bad. This one's actually banned in Germany. They will not let it in the country. Full stop. They called it an illegal spy device. I didn't know what that thing is. There's another one. Again, you turn this thing on, it talks to you. They're interactive toys. Barbie Doll, Mattel was sued. They were going, I love you. You speak to the toy. I love you too. What they didn't tell you, they were recording that and putting that up in their cloud web servers for two years. Mattel was sued over Barbie Dolls. It's gotten so bad that the FBI has put out a public service warning parents not to let their children get these devices. How many people knew that? Again, public service announcement. They're tracking your kids. You do need to be aware of it. Now, I always comes to this end of the conversation. I got forty-five more minutes, but since I'm doing this in twenty, I'm going to give you the short version of it. So what do you do about it? Number one, this kind of venue is very helpful. You guys are obviously serious about this or you wouldn't have asked me to come up here. I have bronchitis. I apologize for my voice, but it's important enough for me to talk to you even with a cold. This is important stuff. It's happening every day. It happened, I got two phone calls on the way up here today. Two hacks already here in Baton Rouge. You know the number one hack here in the I-20 corridor? Credit card skimmers and gas stations right now are so problematic right here on the I-20 corridor. Horrible. Number two, ransomware attacks in medical facilities. I work with the State Fusion Center every single day. Knowledge is power. Understand what you're saying yes to. And as Nancy Reagan used to say, it's okay, just say no. You don't need an interactive or a smart teapot in your house. And if you do, so be it. But just understand what you're gonna give up for that convenience. When you go to bed at night, one simple thing to do, turn your Wi-Fi router off. Most of you don't need connectivity when you're sleeping. Unless you've got some weird apparatus in your house that requires it. Most of you don't. That will lower your exposure by seven to eight hours every single day. That one simple step. You shut your lights off at night, right? Why would you need your Wi-Fi on? All you're doing is leaving yourself vulnerable for that extra eight hours. I leave this briefing here with you. I won't take up your time because I know I'm going to quick clock here today. But we have these, what I call low-tech solutions for a very high-tech world. Posted on our website. I have a book here. My assistant will give you my card. If you really want to dive down on this, I can help you with this. This is what we do at LSU. We do a lot of these types of things. I speak every week of my life just about. Do not let your kids use your real computer. Buy another computer. If you do any kind of household taxes and information that's valuable to you, don't give it to your kids. You can't watch them all the time. You don't know what they're going, what they're doing. That computer is at risk. Buy them a separate computer. This book, I'm going to leave about fifteen copies with you on, is the best one single document I've ever had presented to me. I didn't write it, I wish I did. That will help you manage your digital exhaust. It will help you configure your Facebook accounts, your Tinder accounts, your dating accounts, whatever you guys out there, social media wise, in the most secure way possible. This is actually a DOD endorsed book. I only have a few copies. I have my business cards here. Send me an email saying I want one of these and I'll send it to you or I'll have my assistant send it to you. Use it, be smart about it, and it's up to you. Remember, it's up to you to manage your digital exhaust. Nobody's going to do it for you. Remember my laws. You're the one that always has to clean it up. You're the one that always has the least or the most to lose. You're always the one that's going to know the last and find out at the end. Some of the resources that we use all the time in this business, again, these are all highlighted in the book that I have over here. If you don't have identity theft insurance, I did not endorse any particular product, but I will tell you what I personally use. I use Protect My ID. That's actually done by experience. It costs fourteen dollars a month to protect you. It will cost you fifty to sixty thousand per incident usually to clean it up. It's a very good investment. With that, I think I've got to my twenty minutes. I would defer to the board and the council. Do you have any questions for me?
Any question guys?
Stacy's at the books there?
With that, thank you very much for your time and your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you sir for coming up here and talking to us today.
That makes me want to turn everything off.
Good? We got a way on Stacy.
Stacy is our next presenter.
Just as a, as a close to that, I guess, you know, one of the things that I, I find myself reading this about this subject because I'm interested in it and one of the things that seems to make it so difficult to, for people to get interested in it is because it's so hard to see and I really enjoyed the opportunity to kind of put that right up there in plain sight where we, where we can tell the, you know, the, the standard of excellence that it takes to secure the cyber network is not easily found in a metropolitan area of our size where the, where the technical horsepower and just the, the expertise is not, doesn't necessarily have a home like it does in larger areas and when you, when you see that such small mistakes have such enormous consequences, it's really refreshing to have someone come and kind of knock it into our heads a little bit. So I'm, I'm glad that you came today and enjoyed your presentation very much.
I left the remaining books up here on the table and the business cards.
And I want to apologize for our mics. If you ever come back, I promise you we'll have it repaired and you'll have a clear voice to speak with. So thank you again for coming.
Council, I've distributed the financials for September two thousand eighteen. On page one is our revenue by fund. We're at a hundred and thirteen percent to budget and the general fund is a hundred and five percent. On page two are our expenses by fund and we're at ninety-five percent. On page three is our sales tax and our year-to-date collections. We're at six point six better than prior year, which is a trend that's been the entire year. We've been better than last year. Page four is our manning report. We have six hundred and sixty-seven employees currently. For a budget of six hundred and ninety-three, so we're twenty-six below budget and we're seven below last month. Finally, our water and sewer. The month is at ninety-one percent. Year-to-date is a hundred and five. To budget, we're two hundred and thirty-two percent better. And the rolling twelve months, which is always most accurate, is a hundred and one percent. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Hudson?
Finally, Mark Hudson with our monthly project report and update on Shed Road. One more month of good weather. I believe we can be finished with Shed Road. Everything on the south side's finished. The last pour was scheduled to be made today. Of course, it got rained out. Once that made, is made, they can move to the north side. They got to bust off the asphalt, temporary drive, install a curb and some drainage. We got to seal the joints and put stripes down and we're done. Good weather. In one month, I'm hoping this time, next month, I can tell you we're done. So we'll see how that works out. Councilman Irwin, your right-hand turn lane on Sunflower Road, we're going to open bids on that next council meeting. November, November the sixth. Coleman Street, it's essentially designed, we got to get the highway department up here, Baton Rouge, to do what they call a plan in hand to look what, look at what we propose on the ground. We're also working with the designers of the specialty hospital to make sure that they're site G-halls with our Coleman Street plans. Viking Drive, we're to the point, at the end of this month, we should have all of our right-of-way maps completed, at least to the preliminary stage. There's thirty-three tracts of land to be bought along Viking Drive. Innovation Drive, good news, the Corps has determined it is time to move into the compensatory mitigation phase, the wetlands process. That means it's time to find some wetlands to purchase credits and we're, we're, we're going to start to work on that right away. The Walter, the Highway eighty section of the Walter Bigby Carriage Way, I've told you more than once, the plans are finished. Center points relocating their lines right now. AEP SWEPCO tells me they need about sixty more days to complete their relocations, longer than what they guessed, but right now they've mobilized all of their equipment and a lot of their manpower to the Panhandle of Florida to work those issues there. AT&T tells me they need another month. And tomorrow, we will initiate completing the acquisition of our last piece of right-of-way pipe fence at Humphrey Motors will start tomorrow. Walter Bigby Carriage Way, plan should be far enough along next month for us to go to the levy board to ask their permission to do various things along the levy. Good news, A, the Corps has given AEP SWEPCO their permit to do their relocations along Hamilton. And SWEPCO has told me they're going to put that in line to get that construction underway. And that's great because that, that means perhaps they might be done by the time we hit the ground with our own project. You know, we talked about maybe doing it in different phases. While SWEPCO did some of their relocations, we could maybe be building the bridge, but it, I got a good feeling it looks like they're going to be out of the way by the time we start our project. Commerce Drive, we got the water and sewer in, but we kind of lost some of our momentum, but the contractor's back at work on the street now. Obviously, the rains have set in and it slows things down, but he's, he's on the scene. At the arena, we have at all times a few projects going on. All the new kitchen equipment's been delivered. The arena improvements are substantially complete. Rebecca showed you last week her presentation about how things look. It turned out really nice. The parking lot rehab and new striping in the parking lot, we'll open bids on that November the sixth also, the next council meeting. And you guys had asked me about the new stripes on the parkway. If it were not for the rain, they would have started today. If you have any questions? Thanks, council.
Mark on the parking lot?
That I was going to. Yes, sir.
At the Century Link, we are going to implement a resurfacing, is that right?
What we're going to do is we're going to seal all the cracks and we're going to seal coat the parking lot. It'll make it look really nice. It'll add years of life to it and then we'll put all new stripes back. It'll look like a brand new parking lot.
But how long will that last?
Well, hindsight's twenty-twenty. If you're supposed to seal coat about every three to four to five years, this would be the first time we've ever done it.
What is it? How long will it last?
Well, it'll be down forever. But ideally, I'd say four or five years from now, we would need to do it again.
You advise that rather than going ahead and re-asphalting it?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
What effect does the tents have as far as when they drive stakes through the asphalt?
Well, obviously, that's not a good deal. You break the seal, so to speak. It allows water to get into the base.
So with this resealing project, would it be something that we should consider not allowing that? I mean, how much money are we going to spend?
They use concrete anchors, is that right?
So they don't put, they don't penetrate this seal. That's, I guess that was my question. So so we're good with that. Once this is sealed, there's.
Does the, talk about the sealing, I guess maybe David is also talking about just the general integrity of the
Yes, sir.
pavement. So in this process where you seal it, do you repair incidental failures and?
Absolutely. Here's what we do. Go park anywhere on the parking lot and you'll see it's in pretty good shape. There's really no potholes, but a lot of cracks have developed. They meander all over the place. Some of them are as wide as a quarter of an inch. And, and the plan is we're going to route out those cracks, make them slightly bigger actually, blow them out and clean them and fill them, fill them up with a, with a sealant. That keeps water from getting into those cracks. And then we come back and we spray the entire parking lot with two coats of a sealant that will seal all the little microscopic cracks that you can't even see. It, it pretty much waterproofs the entire surface. What damages that parking lot is water getting into the cracks and into the base and freezing and thawing and freezing and thawing. And that's what wears out any asphalt surface. And so the seal coat will prohibit that and it, like I said, it adds years of life to the parking lot and of course the new stripes will freshen up the appearance also.
So how much money have you spent so far?
On the arena?
Projects to spend?
On all the projects? Oh, councilman, I don't have that number, but I can sure get it to you.
You could, we bonded what, seven? So if we could have a little schedule, we started with seven, where are we today? And what we're going to spend the rest on?
Got it. I can do that for you. Thanks, council.
Alright, unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for salvage and disposal according to law. Final reading.
So move second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Montgomery. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Bossier City and Bart Stell Forward, Inc. Final reading.
So move second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby. Public questions or comments on this agenda item? Council questions? Cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached revised cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Bossier City and the Bossier City Council on aging. Final reading.
So move. Second.
First by Councilman Irwin, and second by Councilman Larkin.
Montgomery.
Montgomery?
Is it, is it a brief, is there anything of consequence that we changed here?
Mayor?
No, it's the same amount, a hundred and fifty thousand. There's some change, and we do realize that the facility's old, and we're working at a suggestion that we can, can address that long-term, but it's same amount of money and same services, essentially.
Great.
Public comment? Questions from the council? Cast your vote. All right, new business.
Introducing ordinance adopting and enacting an amended Unified Development Code for the Bossier City Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission and the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances, providing for a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective. First reading.
So move second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, and a second by Councilman Williams.
Counsel, I'd just like to repeat what I said last week, that there's no changes to this document from when it was before you back in the summer. We are working on some new ordinances, but we want to address those individually in the future. What we concentrated on with amending and updated our Unified Development Code, we were looking for ways to shave off time from many of the approvals that have to go to the zoning board, and I think we were successful in many of those. We were able to shave thirty days off the timeframe for getting projects approved. We've addressed a lot of areas that were kind of gray in there regarding interpretation of how it's written. We tried to address those and clean it up as well as we could. And we, we met with many business people in the area, engineers, surveyors, officials from the parish and the city, and tried to address everything in there that we have talked about with those people.
Questions from, for Sam? Any public comment on this agenda item? Cast your vote. Thank you, Sam.
And thank you, gentlemen.
Introducing ordinance to appropriate forty-seven thousand dollars from the Parkway Capital Projects Fund to be used for citywide pavement markings improvements. First reading.
So move second.
First by Councilman Irwin, and second by Councilman Williams. Public comment on this agenda item? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the city of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for salvage and disposal according to law. First reading.
So move second.
First by Councilman Williams, and a second by Councilman Darby. Public questions on this agenda item? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance to approve the closure and abandonment of a portion of Edwards Street. First reading.
So move second.
First by Councilman Harvey, second by Councilman Williams. Public comment? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an attack act of exchange with the Red River Waterway District. First reading.
So move.
First by Councilman Williams, and a second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance revising and replacing Article Two Collections and Disposal of Chapter Ninety-four Solid Waste of Bossier City Code of Ordinances. First reading.
So move second.
First by Councilman Irwin, and second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance to appropriate funds to cover construction costs for the La San Sewer Lift Station Improvement Project for a total of two hundred thousand dollars to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund. First reading.
So move second.
First by Councilman Larkins, with a second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one traffic control lead technician for Traffic Engineering Division. First and final reading.
So move second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkins. Larkin, questions from the audience? Counsel, cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So move second.
First by Councilman Darby, with a second by Councilman Harvey. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number two for the East Texas Gravity Main Project for an increase of a hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and sixteen cents. Total cost of contract with increase, two million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and two pennies.
So move second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number one and final for Glen Haven Court Reconstruction, an increase of thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Total cost of contract with increase, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and seventeen cents.
So move second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Larkin. Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number one for the Green Acres Forest Main Project for a decrease of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Total cost of contract with decrease, one million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and sixty-seven cents.
So move second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the council on this? Cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number one for the Golden Meadows Sewer Lift Station Project for an increase of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Total cost of contract with increase, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents.
So move second.
First by Councilman Irwin, and second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Approved parade permit fee waiver for the twenty eighteen Heroes Run Saturday, October twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen.
So move second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Montgomery. Questions or concerns from the audience on this agenda item? Questions from the council? Cast your vote. All right, are there any announcements?
No meeting next week. Next week's a dead week.
No meeting next week.
Come on.
Come on. You guys wanna come up here? Mayor, do you have anything for us?
Thank you.
Nothing. Anything from the audience I'd like to announce? All right, meeting adjourned.